I feel like you guys have probably a better idea of what we've been up to. We have Brad sits in on our meetings and kind of helps us get things accomplished. And we have two council members that also sit on that committee. So I assume that as a council, you have a little bit of knowledge of what we've been doing. But honestly, in the last two years, we've had no communication the other direction. The council hasn't really checked in on us. They haven't really asked us what we found out. You know, you haven't told us what your plans are for the future of the pool. So I feel like we've kind of been left in limbo in that process. But in the process of all this, I started noticing, and I don't know where's Dennis. I'm not going to throw him under the bus now. You know, comments were made at different committee meetings that, you know, we're doing all this, we're working on this, but we really need to remember, you know, we have this big, big project coming up, and we're getting ready to have to address the community with this large project. I assume it's the $4.2 million water project. And in addition to that, the article came out in The Tiller, which after reading about myself in The Tiller on Friday, I don't know that I would value that anymore. But there was an article in The Tiller quoting the mayor as saying, you know, that we would need the community to choose between running water in their homes or going for a swim. And I get the priority of the water issues, you guys. I'm not dumb. I totally get we have to have running water. We have to have running water for the pool to work as well. And there's always important things in running a city that, you know, take precedence. We have to make choices. The problem that I guess I have with that is I feel like over the last 30 years, we've known as a community, and I'm addressing this council, this goes 30 years back. Don't think that I'm, you're in the hot seat tonight, but I, you know, I put responsibility on the council that's said over the last 30 years. We've known we had infrastructure issues in this city. We've known we had a pool that was old, that was deteriorating. And over those 30 years, it doesn't appear at least that any money's been set aside to fund these projects. Now we're having to make these choices to move forward in what we're going to move forward with. I've been addressed, and I know, I've spoken with Brad, I spoke with, I didn't speak with you actually, I think we had a Facebook message with the mayor. And I get a lot of feedback that says, if you can just be patient, we're going to address the pool. You know, if you can give us a couple of years here or five years there, maybe this bond will drop off, or this project will have, you know, been taken care of, and we're going to have these funds that will be available for the pool. And the reason I guess I'm not satisfied by that is that that is the same conversation that's been taking place about the pool for over 30 years. It's always, if you'll just be patient, you know, we're going to be able to address these things at a later time. And now here we are with an almost 100-year-old pool basin, and we're not really sure if we can afford to move forward. Sorry, public speaking's on my forte. I think it's easy to be distracted. You guys have a big job, and I get that. You have a high-pressure job. You have to balance the numbers, you have to create a budget and make it work. And I think sometimes it's easy to be distracted by that and forget what the heart of your community is, what the people in your community that you represent, what they want. I know that the swimming pool loses money every summer. I'll be honest, I didn't know that prior to serving on the committee. I don't know why I was surprised by that, but it does lose money. It's my opinion that replacing or repairing the current facility would, I don't think it would make money necessarily, but I do think that you would reduce your losses. It would be more efficient, it would require less repairs, less maintenance, it wouldn't leak. I do think that there's some value into looking into that potential. The thing I want to impress upon you, I guess, is that you can't put a dollar amount on things like swimming pools, parks, and recreation. When I think of Larned, you know, you guys, we spent this money, and not just you guys, I think it was a county effort, a city effort, to create these promotional videos, trying to draw people to Larned, Kansas. And I've watched those, I've watched them several times over the last few weeks. This is my home. This is where I was raised. This is where I choose to raise my family and invest my time and my money in. I'm very passionate about Larned and the people that live in it. If you were to ask me, you know, what defines Larned, Kansas? It's the people, it's the family atmosphere. If I was going to tell somebody that didn't know anything about Larned, like, what are my favorite things? I would tell you the pool. I would tell you the water tower lights, I would tell you the duck pond, the water fountain at the back, the train that runs. Those things are universal childhood memories to people in this room. If you were raised here, those are things that are close to your heart, they're things that you value, they're a part of our history, they're traditions. I spent summer nights, you know, getting an ice cream in my pajamas with my family, and we'd go down and park and watch the water fountain change colors. We swam, we'd check the ducks at the duck pond. At Christmas, you always look for the water tower lights. There are things that don't make money, there are things that are hard to put a number on, there are things that are hard to sign when you have these big glaring projects, but they have value to people that live here, and they're important to the people that live here. And I would hope that they would be important to you because they are important to us. You represent us, you are able to allot and budget our tax dollars, and I hope that you consider things like that when you're doing a budget. I want to offer, in some ways, I think, an alternative to some funding. I want to help make this happen for this community. I don't know if any of you, if you've seen any of my Facebook posts or anything like that. There's two cities or communities in Kansas that I have looked at. I imagine there's probably more, because sadly, our story is not an unusual one. There are a lot of small communities in Kansas having to fight for their pools. Some have councils that don't want to really do anything, and some have councils that want to, but they're concerned about funding. The city of Osborne, I had the opportunity to visit with their chairperson, her name is Lacy Holloway, and she was kind of like me. She was an employee at the pool, I think she might be a manager actually. And she realized, you know, that their pool was aging, that it needed to be addressed, and their council just didn't feel like they had the funds to move forward. So they developed their own committee, went to their council and said, hey, we want to try to do this, we want to try to get that community block grant that is actually due next week for this year. It's a $1 million grant for pools and communities. And she said, we want to try and fundraise, seek out donors and private donations, seek out smaller grants and things like that, and we want to try to raise this money for our pool. In three years, they've been working, and I actually just got on their Facebook page like last week, and they hit just in private donations, fundraising efforts, they've got some small grants. They are in the Dane G. Hanson service area, so they were very fortunate, they had a $300,000 match from the Dane G. Hanson. Unfortunately, we're like two counties off, but you never know. But they have just hit $1 point million in fundraising efforts as a community to put towards their pool. In addition to that, they are submitting their community block grant. They will know in July if they are approved, that's a $1 million grant, their pool's basically right at $2 million. So between the grant money and the community effort, they will be able to start building their pool in 2020, given the grant approval. The other city that I've looked at is Smith Center. They, and I haven't actually talked with anybody from there, but their Facebook, if you search Smith Center Pool Project, it's very open to the public, they're very forward with their information. In January, they decided that they wanted to try to apply for this million-dollar grant also. And so they began meeting on doors, getting surveys done, seeking out private donations, doing fundraisers just like Osborne. They have raised since January, and I think they actually hit their money mark in April, 691,000. And that was their 60-40 match requirement for the community block grant. So they didn't raise like a full million, but they raised their 60-40 in like three months' time. Again, all private fundraising grants, private donors, things like that. I believe this community can make this happen if they want it. I think I've had a number of people reach out to me that are interested in it. I can't speak for the community as a whole, but I think we have options. I think there's a desire to see this happen for our community. I met with Kristy Testin at the Gold Bell Community Foundation about a week ago, told her kind of my idea. They are willing to house our project. By running our project through them, it allows it to be a nonprofit. So anyone that donates to the project can use it as a tax write-off. They do require us to have a Plan B, which I'm sure you would also want us to have. And that, for me, would be if we reach a point where we don't think we're going to hit our goal, or we aren't qualified for the community block grant at some point. All the money in that fund would be gifted to the cities, and that's how that works at the end of whatever project, when you've completed, the money's gifted to the city for your project. But any money that we did raise, if we weren't able to raise and hit our goal, would go into the current facility for upgrades and repairs. It does require your cooperation. The community block grant, I think, has to be run through your city government. I'm not exactly completely sure how that works. I think Brad's pretty, maybe I put him on the spot, knowledgeable about that, but we kind of looked at it in our committee meetings, so. But it does require cooperation. I don't want to sit here and just point fingers. I want to help be a solution, I want to make this happen for our community, but I want us to work together. I would like to ask you guys to make a good faith effort, move it forward, to show something in the budget to, for the current pool, for a future pool. We have to start now, or it's never going to happen. I know, I think your 2020 budget is maybe coming up, I'm not exactly sure, but I would like to see something in there that shows, you know, even if we were able to give the city a pool and you didn't have to spend a dime, it's going to be your job to maintain it. And so there has to be funds there for the future of the current pool or a new one. I'm talking a lot about a new pool. I do want to mention that if at some point we decided to just upgrade the current one, I mean, I'm fine with whatever the community wants, but either way, we're going to have to start setting funds aside to address this. Again, at the end of the project, the city has gifted the funds. I would ask that there was some kind of a formal written contract that the funds went exactly where we intended them to go to a new pool. Other than that, I would, oh, excuse me, I would like to continue to utilize the current pool committee if they were willing to serve after all of this, to finalize a concept. Larkin gave us four concepts for replacement. They're all right, but they're kind of what he came up with after sitting in on some of our meetings. I don't think anyone's ever actually asked us as a committee, like, what exactly do you want, what size do you want? But he came up with some nice rough drafts. But I would like the opportunity to sit with Larkin, or email Larkin however, and let him know, you know, based off of our surveys that we sent out to the community, based off of the committee's wishes. Two options, one for upgrade and repair of the current facility with prices, and obviously one for total replacement of the current pool with prices, amenities, all that. It obviously requires community input, and we want to do what the community wants. We want to have a pool that everyone, not everyone, let's be realistic, but that the majority of the community is happy with, and things like that. I would also want to add an additional committee that worked with me to handle the financing, the fundraising, the seeking private donors, grant writing. One idea that I have, and I think it is a great one, maybe because it's mine, but being raised bricks that you could sell, I think we did that at DeWer Vernon, to have a donor wall for people that donated to this project. I think that's a great idea. We have former lifeguards that have reached out to me and said, hey, you know, that place has a piece of my heart, I would be totally interested in buying a brick or just donating to your cause. So I would like you guys to consider that as an option. The other thing I wanted to just talk about quickly is the current pool. Obviously, I've mentioned many times the filtration system right now, to me, is probably the glaring problem that needs addressed. It's my understanding, and if I'm incorrect, please someone tell me, but I think it's about a $30,000 purchase. However, even if we purchased a new filtration system now, it would be transferable to a new pool. So we wouldn't lose that money by investing into a new filtration system. It could be utilized in a new facility. Same thing if we were to purchase the automated chemical delivery system, things like that will transfer over into a new facility. So it's not money wasted to look at addressing those things now. So I would like you guys to maybe take that into consideration. Really, the last thing I want to do is just tell you, I mean, and it is emotional, it is dramatic, but this pool is worthy of our time, it's worthy of our investment. And the kids that it serves in this community, they're our greatest asset. We want to bring people to Larned, Kansas. Your greatest opportunity at that is investing in the kids that live here. That's why I'm here, because my childhood was great, I love small-town living, I want to share that with my kids. I want to raise my kids in the same type of town and environment that I was raised. That's why I'm here. We invest in these kids, we invest in their childhood, and they're going to want to come home. I just ask that you consider bringing something to the table and offer good faith effort to show that we're going to move forward together. And obviously, I'm asking for your permission to move forward with potential fundraising and things like that. So that's all I have. Okay? Yep.
Any other public comments regarding the pool?
Good evening. I'll prepare a little quick statement for y'all tonight, and just wanted to, excuse me, thank y'all for allowing me to time to speak to y'all tonight. My name is Charles Lackabee. First, let me start off by saying that my family and I have only lived in Larned three years. Although my wife was born and raised here in Larned. In regards to the swimming pool, can I say I'm drawn to discussion based off of emotional attachment or sentimental memories that most of the community has that may or may not be here today. For the past 23 years, I have been deeply involved in the field of swimming pool construction and renovation, repair, and aquatic equipment and maintenance. Before moving to Larned, my company, Exotic Waters Pool and Spa, was a thriving and successful business in Frisco, Texas, that addressed many needs of residential swimming pool owners and commercial business owners alike. I provided swimming pool inspections that were used in the decision of purchasing homes, pools needed or pools needs, and must-haves. My vast knowledge of swimming pool system functions and water chemistry allows me to stand here today and be confident that I can be a sum assistant to the city of Larned by providing cost-effective options for a swimming pool current status and enlighten those who feel there isn't any real solution. Now, if allowed, I feel that at the end of the day, a solution is a must for the pool's current condition, and it has become apparent that it can no longer be avoided. This town is only as strong as the community that supports it. Very little amenities are available to the community here in Larned, and what is available is a must for future growth. Forward-thinking is essential for the future generations that will call Larned home for many years. Children's safety and needs should be at the forefront of any and all concerns that this council and members of this community may have. I just want to thank y'all for that time. But just a little side note, I had time to take a look at the inspection that was provided against the pool community. And just by going through it, you can see there's a lot of incomplete and inaccurate information that was provided, with a substantial number that may be a little bit far-fetched in what the city can actually do to resolve the existing matter that is going on with the pool now, and maybe budget for a later process so that a new pool or new construction can be actually done. There are some things in here that's only going to be Band-Aid fixes that is going to probably dissipate within six to nine months, or even a season, based upon the chemicals that are being pushed into the pool. So I, well, I mean, and respectfully, this inspection has some completeness to it, but it, like I said, it's not accurate. And I feel like if the council's going to take some type of action in regards to this, I think that all information that should be provided should be there for y'all. And so in regard to that, I would say that a new inspection should be provided, at least from an outside source, and no better than a person who actually lives here in the town and who has the experience to do so. We could go over the details for it right now, but I think it'd take all night, and I think we have one night. But I'd be more than happy to either speak with the council, or speak with the pool community, or the council itself, and discuss so many things that are outlined in this inspection to maybe educate, because a lot of times, if we're not educated, we don't get, we just receive the information as being told, because a lot of businesses have, just have big names, or they've been doing it. But in this regard, there's a lot of room for improvement. And I think the city would be more open to the ideas, and the $800,000 for the repair cost could be substantially subtracted so that it may be more pleasing to the actual council and the city of Larned, so that we can get some things done. My children, I have six kids here, and they're all the way in high school, all the way down to elementary, and they go to the pool. And one of the most important things for me is ensuring that the water that my kids are getting into is safe. And yes, the filtration system is outdated, I looked at it, but there's a reason why there's things that's been happening to it, and they have been caught. And if we had been informed, educated, some of our kids could, would have been avoided being, excuse me, exposed to either underuse or overuse of these chemicals, which is dangerous to these kids. I mean, we take our own responsibility jumping in the water, but as parents, we want to ensure that our kids are in the best possible hands, or water, when we allow them to swim. I swam in creeks when I grew up, so. We didn't have pools, you know, but we didn't care. But these days, I do care. And I just hope that the council highly considers taking another look before moving forward on their actions, to see if there's going to be some costs that can be cut and things that can be upgraded so that we all feel secure with swimming in the pool. Y'all have a good night.
All right, thank you.
Did your name have to be on the agenda to talk?
No, not today.
I just have a couple of things. I have a friend that lives in Wollmango, Kansas, and they were having the same issues with their pool as what we've had with our pool. And so last July, they closed their pool, and I tried to get more information before more meetings tonight, because I knew it was going to be tonight, and I tried to get ahold of somebody from Wollmango that could share some information. And I know they had to do some before work, and I don't know what the before work was, whether they have grant money, whether they have somebody that made a huge donation, I'm not sure how they did it. They closed their pool in July, they did their dirt work, and they're building their new structure, and it's going to be open this summer. So it can happen in a year, and I know there's work we have to do prior, but when I get the information from them, I will share it with that committee, or whoever I need to, to get that information out to the local people. And theirs is going to be a, they're going to have an indoor pool and an outdoor pool, and the outdoor part's going to have like a water park. It's going to be a full-fledged like Great Bend, but it's a substantial pool size.
Any other public comments?
Hi, my name is Sharon Towery, and I volunteer with the OMS Spirit Store and the OMS Spirit Store class daily at the middle school. And our kids have put together a video that I would like permission to play, if that would be okay. Is this possible?
All right, so thank you.
Hi, my name is Smearle Perez. I want to take this from a different perspective. I know most of you know that I'm a foster parent and have been for 40 years, so I'd like to take from the perspective of what the pool actually does for kids, that their families may not able to afford for them to go to a daycare, that, you know, many of them take their kids to school, and it keeps them out of trouble. Those kids that don't have any place to go end up in foster care, they end up in trouble, and then, you know, we're paying for them on the backside, which is, has no benefit whatsoever for these children. You know, our school system is a wonderful school system, you know, the majority of the time. We have a lot of kids that come in our community that are in foster care, that this is the only time that they can see sometimes people that actually care about kids. They go down to the pool and they see Mr. Nolan, and they see, you know, the lifeguards down there, and they see people that actually care about them. They see people that actually want to see them do better. They get into interactions that they may have not had such positive interactions. Our pool provides that for our kids, that provides it for our children, and also provides it for children who may not have that. And I think to lose that, we're losing a lot of children.
Any other public comments?
Hi, my name is Brian Quinn. I didn't grow up all the time in Larned, but I pretty much lived at the pool. I grew up, was raised in Roseville, Kansas, and if you've been to Roseville, there's nothing there. So when your parents took you to the pool at noon, and you waited for the door to unlock, and they come and picked you up at 5:00 PM, that's where I was. I was raised at the pool, because there was nothing to do at Roseville during the summer. So I'm probably like Erin, I have a lot of time spent at the pool, but these days, I would love to enjoy to take my grandkids there, but when I go and there's a film on the water, I just can't do it. Myself, I look at that, and I'm like, okay, I'm done. So we go home, and I set up a little baby pool, and, you know, I can't really sit in the baby pool, and then I have to empty it when we're done, because we don't have a fence put up, so it's just, I'm like, huh. So we don't get to go swimming. But the other thing I want to say is, our pool in Larned represents Roseville, Burvet, Jet Horn, and Pony Rock, and all the other kids that can't go to Great Bend, or, you know, Garden City or Dog City. But I think if we improve our pool, we'll get those other towns to come back to Larned instead of traveling to Great Bend and Dog City and all that too.
Any other public comments? Sharon?
Hi there. I'm Carol Rapslaff, I'm a mom of three, and a lot of my kids have spent a lot of time at the pool, and they love it, they're "pool rats" as they call them. And I see a lot of coaches here, a lot of people who are very important in the community, the ones who serve our kids constantly. And this is what part of the pool is about, is keeping this community alive. And there's a lot of people here, a lot of people that really care, and I would really truly hope that me as a parent, I'm going to be here as a grandparent, see my grandkids and my great-grandkids go to that pool, go to the rec activities that we still at this time have. So I really, really hope we try to keep this community alive by keeping our rec activities, keeping our pool. Maybe someday, if that pool's nice enough still, maybe we can get swimming, swimming teams back up again. My husband, James Rowe, would like to see that, and he'd probably be part of it too. So there, there's things that we can do with the pool. Whether they're not there now, maybe it's because, you know, we are a dying town. We need to keep these kind of things alive and going. But, you know, we've got some very strong-willed people here, and I know that there are people, including my family, ready to donate. So let's please think this over and get it rolling.
Mr. Rapp?
Yeah.
I'd like and encourage you all to come and budget here. Last year, there was nobody here for our budget hearing. I know you're concerned about the pool. Two years ago, the room was full. They got what they wanted, the 25 different organizations, and the room emptied out. You know, it's a process we go through with the budget every year. And I'd encourage you to come listen to what the budget process is.
Can you tell us when that is?
When is it, Gil?
It's coming up in May. We have hearing, we have several lots of hearings before we get to that point. Can anybody tell me what one meal costs, what one meal raises in Larned?
One?
One meal?
About $26,000.
$18.5, $18,500. So that means it takes 4.8 meals, and I'm not against the pool, but it takes 4.8 meals for us to operate the pool for two and a half months. $1,200 a day. So when it comes time to budget here, fill the chairs up. That's what, you know, you know, I'd like to see some input at budget time.
But yeah, we give, we give water to the golf course and the public garden and all that. Is that budgeted in, or?
We also give, you know, the pool receives all of their, all of their water. What I'm saying is, is there's more to it than just, the whole picture has to be looked at. And, you know, I, you know, I've been having the budget hearings even before I became the council there. So I just encourage you Whether they're not there now, maybe it's because, you know, we are a dying town. We need to keep these kind of things alive and going. But, you know, we've got some very strong-willed people here and I know that there are people, including my family, ready to donate. So let's please think this over and get it rolling.
Mr. Merritt?
Yeah.
I'd like to encourage you all to come and budget here. Last year, there was nobody here for our budget hearing. I know you're concerned about the pool. Two years ago, the room was full. They got what they wanted, the twenty-five different organizations, and the room emptied out. You know, it's, it's a process we go through with the budget every year. And I'd encourage you to come listen to what the budget process is.
Can you tell us when that is?
When is it, Kim?
It's coming up in May. We have hearing, we have several lines of hearings before we get to that point. Can anybody tell me what one mill costs, what one mill raised in Larned?
One?
One mill.
About twenty-six thousand.
Eighteen point five, eighteen thousand five hundred dollars. So that means it takes four point eight mills, and I'm not against the pool, but it takes four point eight mills for us to operate the pool for two and a half months. Twelve hundred dollars a day. So when it comes time to budget hearing, fill the chairs up. That's what, you know, you know, I'd like to see some input at budget time.
But yeah, we give, we give water to the golf course and the public garden and all that. Is that budgeted in or, I mean?
Also, you know, the pool receives all of their, all of their water. What I'm saying is, is there's more to it than just, the whole picture has to be looked at. And, you know, I, you know, I've been having the budget hearings even before I became the council member. So I just encourage you to tell us the budget hearing, that's when we're going to start talking about the real dollars.
Yeah, and to kind of give a little bit of note there. There's a couple of benefits, I think, as I, I haven't put together the idea that as a council, when elected, infrastructure is, was not addressed. So we're trying to figure out these plans and the pool is a part of that plan, that's what I'm trying to show. August of seventeen, we realized the pool was an issue, so we got the advisory committee, Carl and those guys do a great job, our staff does a great job. We set that up, we're trying to figure out, we're getting bids, what's the cost of the repair, we're having bond people coming to figure out how much is it, you know, what's that bond payment look at? We're trying to, and I think we're kind of on the same thing, I'm hoping this energy, that really what you're seeing other communities doing is the type of donation. Hopefully, we can channel this energy and that's going to be able to work and use the grant fund matching. If not, for a city, we're going to have the way that kind of the financial rules are even the budget process is very important, I want you to come for that. But there's a property tax law in Brown Max era that basically was put in. If we wanted to raise property taxes to build a new pool, we cannot. Because, and I guess you go to public vote, there's basically a property tax law that's set in by the governor back then that you cannot raise property taxes outside of what you levy the prior year times inflation number without going to a vote. So we are fixed, fixed income in the general fund of true property tax and what we can levy. I also think there is a sentiment of seniors are on